All right, I am going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to, welcome everyone, to the school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School District on Tuesday, March 24th. If you would please arise, if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the vision of liberty, justice, and tolerance.
All right, for those of you who may watch this on TV, we've got a lot of people remoting in, so this roll call could get a little bit tricky. You might not, I'm not sure how you will see everyone, we can see everyone. So Molly, would you mind taking role?
Larkin?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
A Samurai?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
All right, thanks. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. And man, are we executing on that right now. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Can I, and we'll move on to the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura, sorry, John, you're just a hair behind.
That's fine.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Announcements, April 9th and 10th, Thursday and Friday, there is no school. April 14th, Tuesday, there's a regular school board meeting in here in the community room, but as discussed, pending up for their motion. We'll talk more about that. April 21st, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there is a regular school board work session here in the community room. April 28th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there will be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Madam Chair, members, there's no correspondence tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks and ask clarifying questions and, if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I giggle not because this is an important part of the meeting, it is, it's just that literally no one is here, and that's probably a good thing tonight. Don, we didn't get any? All right, great. Okay, can we have a motion to move forward on the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report?
So moved.
Lauren? John second? All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries, great. Acknowledgements of contributions. Of course, I don't have this page marked, but I'm very excited to read this. Because this is a resolution, I get to read it. Can I have a, it's a resolution, so I have a motion first, correct? Can I get a motion on the acknowledgement of contributions, resolution?
So moved.
Thanks, Hala, second?
Second.
Laura? Thanks. Acknowledgements of contributions, resolution. Whereas Minnesota statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the district designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the peoples thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $12,429. The detailed background, a donation of $500 was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo for student needs. A donation of $210 was made to North Park Elementary by Wells Fargo for student need. Donation of $234 was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo for student needs. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. Noom Technology Solutions, $3,500. Diane Scully, $100. Joy Bliss, $25. Pamela Sigerson, $50. Barb St. Peter, $100. Olson Joint Trust, $1,000. Pat Johnson, $2,000. The Class of '76, $750. The Kiwanis Club, $2,000. And Northeast State Bake Foundation of $1,500. Donations of mittens was made to Valley View Elementary by Saint Phillips Lutheran Church for student needs, estimated value of $80. Donation of flag football gear was made to Valley View Elementary by the Minnesota Vikings for student physical education, estimated value $200. Donation of mittens was made to Valley View Elementary by Saint Phillips Lutheran Church for student needs, estimated value of $180. Total fiscal year 2019-20, monetary contributions to date $200,051.30. Any discussion?
Very much appreciated.
Yep, agreed. People are so generous, and I think of the thoughtfulness, and especially those scholarship fund donations, that's very generous. Anybody else? All right, Molly, this is a resolution, so we'll need a roll call vote.
Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
A Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. A resolution carries, excuse me, or to pass a resolution, I suppose. All right, so the motion passes and the resolution carries. All right. Right now, we're going to take reports from members of the school board. Just because people are leery about being in confined spaces very long, I'm actually going to defer my report for the next time, but I'm going to ask if you all want to share, feel free, Molly.
I'll defer.
Okay. Laura?
I'll also defer.
All right, John?
I'll defer.
Lauren?
I also defer.
Thanks. Hala?
I also defer, so you guys don't stay there longer.
Thank you, Hala, I appreciate it. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. I'm sure you do have some things to tell us with all the action that's going on.
I just have a few things, Madam Chair and members. I spent an unusual time in the school district, and it has been for people in the community, the state, and the nation. At this time, principals and teachers are busily planning for distance learning, should it occur on Monday, March 30th. There will be a decision, this will be a decision made by Governor Walz, and he has not told us yet, but that would happen later this week or over the weekend. Emergency childcare is in full swing, and it's being provided for our healthcare or emergency workers with a child ages four through 12. They, also, we're doing just a wonderful job, I think, of breakfast and lunch meals that are distributed around the community by our bus drivers and our cooks and our staff, both licensed and nonlicensed. The meal drop offs, if you're looking for them and don't know about them yet, are listed on our website. And I also wanted to mention that on the website, the communications department has implemented a COVID-19 website, so you could, if you're interested in looking at what's going on in the district or with some of the updates, you can certainly look at it there. And I just want to say special thanks to all who are involved in these, as we transition to a temporary new normal. And the time and the effort and the energy put into the efforts, I really appreciate it. It's hard to believe that in one week, actually, we would have put together a virtual school. I also want to thank the school board members who have been in contact with me regarding COVID-19 updates and matters and other issues throughout the week. So thank you so much, and thanks to everybody in this room, in the community, listening, and to the board for your flexibility and dedication to our students to make this all possible.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your hard work too, everyone, and we'll get to that, I'm sure, along the way. But we'd like to welcome Tara Tokrol and Hannah Stark to talk a little bit more about curriculum instruction and our focus on the arts and art standards.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm excited to be here tonight with an amazing arts teacher at the high school, Hannah Stark. We wanted to share some updates around the art standards that have been released and our work that we've been doing in Columbia Heights with it. Our mission of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and really focusing in on the innovation and the excellence we have in our arts department. This will be an informational update, so no governance question. And really looking at the timeline for the art standards, they started writing them back in 2017. It goes through a pretty lengthy process where they gather public input, teacher input, and then actually get approval from the state, and that happened in 2019. And so we've really been focusing in on the professional development side of it. We're fortunate to have Hannah, who worked with the Purpits Center, and she'll share a little more about that as well, to support our teachers in the changes that happened with the standards. And the goal is by 2022, is full implementation of the new standards. So I'm going to pass it over to Hannah.
Good evening, Chair Severson, and members of the board, and Superintendent Kathy Kelly. I am so honored to be here with you tonight. I was really excited because I feel like presenting on this brings a sense of normalcy in a time where things feel a little less normal. So I had the tremendous pleasure of sitting on the standards writing committee in 2018 and was really able to be a part of that process. And at the end of the process, we released the standards and were voted in. And there were a lot of shifts that happened in the standards, as with many of the new state standards in Minnesota. But some of the major points that we wanted to kind of highlight is, one of the big umbrellas of the new Minnesota state standards is thinking about artistic literacy and really changing the language around the standards to include this idea of literacy, because Minnesota is so focused on the whole person, educating the whole person. So really writing the standards to meet that need. And we defined artistic literacy as the ability to combine foundational knowledge and skills in an art form with the four fundamental processes, processes, fundamental to the arts. So that's creating, performing, or presenting, responding, and connecting. And I'll kind of talk about that in a second. But then, the other major focus of the new standards is being culturally relevant in a time where we're really evaluating equity practices within school districts. We wanted the standards to reflect and support that work for arts educators. So now, there are five strands before there are four. So there are foundations, which really is the core, the skills. There's create, perform/present, depending on which arts form it's focused on, and then connect. And they're the same across all the arts disciplines, so that's a big difference. Before, with the 2008 standards, they had lots of different standards in each of the different areas, and now they're really the same. So that brings a sense of inner connection between arts learning, kind of binds us together. Then there's anchor standards, so this is the general goal or summary. The students are supposed to learn in the content area, and there's 10. So we have kind of the umbrella of the five, and then there's 10 underneath the five in each of the different areas. And so those 10 are also the same across all of the arts standards and all of the arts disciplines. And so the benchmark is where everything gets more specific. And so within each anchor standard at each grade level, there's a specific benchmark. And that's a major shift. So before, the standards in primary and secondary, early secondary, so sixth through eighth grade, were grouped together. So elementary teachers were able to do multiple grades at the same time with the same standards. And now, every single elementary art, visual arts teacher has a different, has a different standard to meet. So there's a lot more professional development and also a lot more standards required from the state. And that was mandated, that that changed from grade bands to individual grade standards at the elementary level. And that was required. And so that's a major shift, but we're already beginning to address that through professional development. So the four standard areas are dance, music, theater, visual arts, and media arts. And we just wanted to discuss some of the ways in which we are already addressing this within Columbia Heights. So elementary, from the state, we're required to meet the standards in two areas and offer three. And so what we do right now is we have, oh, the other, it's required to be taught by an arts licensed teacher at the elementary education, so.
Can I add in Hannah, or an elementary education teacher? So the difference in elementary is that an elementary education teacher can also teach the arts areas.
Right, yes, correct. So Heights currently provides music and visual arts and band, as well as media arts. And then there is some additional dance and theater through FIAED, as well as through encore programming. And yeah, there's kind of a big conversation because there's so many standards at the elementary level, districts this size, as well as rural districts, looking at this kind of, this integration, and really training both general educators, so that classroom teachers, in things like media arts, and things like theater and dance, so that we're offering all of these different areas without pulling on some of the FTE. Dance, music, theater, visual arts, and media arts are all also an opportunity for middle school students. So the requirement is that they meet the standards in two areas and are offered in three. We hit that straight on. We have a full-time media arts teacher, full-time theater, music, visual arts, and there's some dance included in the other areas, particularly in theater, it's quite common. And then at the high school, same, we do a fabulous job. We're required to meet the standards in one area and offered in three. So they're required to complete one credit for graduation, this was kind of another unique change. The accreditation at the high school looks a little bit differently, not super different, it's just the rigor, it's upped in rigor for high school, essentially. And then, it has to be taught by an appropriate arts licensed teacher. And at Columbia Heights High School, we have dance and theater combined to be taught, and we use things like compass and after-school programming for encore, particularly for things like dance. And then we offer music, band, visual arts, and media arts through instruction. These are just some photos. We have fabulous students, they win awards, and they, because of the arts education that they receive from the elementary level all the way through high school, it's really astounding to see how far and how well they develop by the time they're in high school. When I see them, I also taught at Valley View as an elementary teacher in media arts before, and so seeing them at both sides, I really see how, what an amazing arts education they receive here, and I think it really helps us stand out as a district. Yeah.
Any questions? Any questions on the computer?
No, sounds like you've been working hard, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my daughter, when school kind of has changed here, I ask my kids, do you have anything left in your locker that you absolutely need? And she said, what about my art projects? I mean, it was touch and go there for a hot second, so I'm assuming they'll be waiting for the kids.
Yeah, she did a beautiful drawing, it's absolutely stunning, it's hanging in the hall, and yes, it will be there for her.
She has some ceramic stuff too, that she's pitter-patter about, so. All right, good to know. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, annual capital project levy update. Thanks for joining us, Hannah.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Let's see, I have to make sure I start with the right one here first. Okay. All right. This evening, we're going to just talk about our annual capital projects levy update. It's a presentation that we give once a year, just to let the board know what we've done with the capital projects levy dollars, and that we're continuing down the path that we said we were going to from the 2014 levy approval from the community. So this will look very similar to what we've presented before. Again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public School, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values, again, when we talk about dollars from the community that were voted on, it's, there's a lot of community effort and collaboration. We've got to have integrity and courage to use those dollars appropriately in innovative ways. So it really is cutting across our whole core values. And again, a reminder, capital projects levy, 60% facilities and 40% technology, so those dollars that come in from that levy, each year it's split in this fashion, and Denise keeps me on the up and up on that. You know, I always want to do more with technology. Capital projects levy, the 60% facilities, just again, a reminder, we're talking about repairing roofs, windows, doors, plumbing, and casework, casework being the cabinets within the classrooms, storage within the classrooms, replacing or repairing furnaces or boilers, repairing water damage insideing, brick tuck pointing, resurfacing the athletic track, which is complete, improving signage, which we continue to work on, and repairing parking and driveways. So those are the focuses of those expenditures. And just to touch on, like before, we've kind of gone through what we've done in the past and what we're planning on doing in the future. So in the summer of 2018, we replaced, we weren't really replaced, we put boilers at Highland Elementary. That was a project that came about because the high school used to supply heat to Highland Elementary. It was springtime, still a little cold, and the pipe that runs underneath the ground to the building that supplies that heat burst, and we had to dig up part of the parking lot to fix that. So in order to, and it's a single point of failure every time, so we only have one pipe that runs over there. So we, by putting boilers over there now, they're a self-sufficient building, and we don't have to rely on that single point of failure. Domestic water lines at the high school, that's going to be a continued project for us in the future, not at the high school, but at other buildings, they're all roughly the same age, and we're going to have to deal with those old pipes. In 2019, the summer, we did the track at the high school, and I'm very excited that it's complete, it's ready to go. You can see it in the picture there, you know, new pole vault runway and pads at the end, they're larger, so they support current standards. Instead of the single triple jump long jump, now we have a double, and that's side by side. We extended the high jump area out to the track completely, so it's now not just a little island square on its own, and then a complete resurface of the track, and then we added that extension runway at the end here for the runoff. So it's a complete project, it's ready to go, and I guess with the challenges of how we're going to finish the school year, it might be another year before it's really used. And then, in 2019, we talked about parking and drive reconfiguration at North Park. This was listed then because it's a big project. It's a little bit bigger than what we've, chunks of, that we've taken out on these other projects. So it really is going to be a project that needs some carryover dollars. And so for next, this summer, next year, for summer of 2020, we're going to be really completing that work. So that site work at North Park Elementary for that bus loop and the parking parent drop off, and really making that a safe, separate space, there's a lot of expense in that area, more so than the other buildings. So that will be our primary project for this year for the capital projects levy. And again, if you remember from the list, all these things are a part of that. For capital projects levy, technology, again, increasing internet bandwidth, making sure what we, the connection speed that we have is reliable and large enough for our students. And in talking about distance learning, it's more important than ever. Improving parent and student portal technology systems that connections to our families and students, increasing technology systems for safety and security, expanding networks and infrastructure capacity for wireless, acquiring technology devices and installing, replacing, and supporting, and maintaining software and related trainings. So those are the things that we talked about when we went out for the levy. Again, in 1819, we focused on the personalized learning initiative and expanding to grades four through 12. And in 1920, we expanded to grades three, so that really met our goal when we started this, which was having grades three through 12 with one-one devices. So, and we continue to work on our classroom AV systems with this. You know, there's only so much money to go around, and as much as I wanted to keep pulling facilities dollars, even though I guess I don't want to do that anymore, it's my department too. But, you know, it's, we can only do so many at a time. So, and we continue to work hard at professional development, and it's been crazy the last couple of weeks on professional development and getting people up to speed on online learning, or distance learning. And so for the 2021 school year, for this next fiscal year, we're going to be continuing to support that tech integration staff person, and with technology and instruction, continuing to work on our AV systems. Hopefully, we'll be able to take a bigger chunk off this next year than we have in the previous years as we've been expanding the program. And continuing with, like I said, the professional development programming through that tech integration supported person, and continue to maintain the one-to-one device-student ratio, so in grades three through 12. So every year, we'll be purchasing third grade students, as they come from second to third grade, they're going to get a new device. As the fifth graders roll into middle school, they'll get a new device to carry through their middle school year, and when they hit freshman year, they'll get a new device to carry through their freshman year. The devices that roll off, we'll continue to maintain as carts as necessary in the buildings. And now our focus, or one of our larger focuses for this next year, not related to this, but just a note, is really what's our plan moving forward with K2, and not saying this in a one-to-one discussion, but just making sure that they have appropriate use, or appropriate access to the technology in grades kindergarten or pre-K through two in the buildings as well. So that was everything from an update from the capital projects levy.
And just as a reminder for people watching, because I know people are really desiring more content right now, so I'm sure lots of people will be watching this meeting, that this is the capital projects levy that we, that the voters voted in in 2014, right? And so it's in the midst of its tenure cycle, so thanks to the voters. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I think now is a great time to really just acknowledge our community and the voters, and just to see how prepared our students are for distance learning, should that happen. And a huge thank you to the administration and staff that are rolling this out, because just seeing where other communities are, I think Columbia Heights students have a really good thing going on right now, so thank you to everyone.
Yeah, without those one-to-one devices, this would be extremely hard right now, so. Questions, Laura, or the remote crew?
Oh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian, thanks Denise.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, Brian, you're staying for a construction project update?
Okay, make sure I close the right line off and go to the right construction project. Good. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, for the next presentation, I have a construction update on our bond projects. Again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public School, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values, again, we're talking about voter-approved dollars for our construction projects, and we just really couldn't do it, and it really runs a strand through our core values, and we really couldn't do it without the community and collaborating with our partners. Just a quick reminder, the bandroom addition, performance space updates and remodel, and North Park Elementary School improvements are those construction projects that we're talking about. And this is just a repeat here on the, kind of, the timeline, and the thing I want to focus in is the very bottom, the ribbon-cutting spring of 2020. I know that previously, there was probably a specific date there, not probably, there was a specific date, there just really isn't at this point, so, but that, I just wanted to make a note of that. Again, I took some pictures and, kind of, based off of our renderings, and this one here is just the outside of the building, but then this rendering is the one I really want to focus on. So this is the rendering when we started this process, and talked about the needs of the bandroom and what pieces needed to be in place to fulfill those needs. And this is a picture from the room today, so in comparison to the rendering, and it's just phenomenal how spot-on it really is and how great it is. In the front left top, you know, you can see your acoustical panels in your windows, they do have the shades on them. And as you move down the wall, you can see your instrument storage. In the front of the room, we have the high-density storage for all the music that's stuck around in the basement right now in a storage room, so it's actually accessible to the students, which is fantastic. which is fantastic. You know, new teaching station, the capability, video conferencing, it's hard to see, I can see it well from my computer screen, but there's microphones hanging from the ceiling for recording in the space, so it's just, it just, I think it really, we really, we captured what our vision was in reality. So it really feels good to have that, that project and that room complete. So there's still, you know, some cleanup as far as the transition of moving, some of us have moved homes before, I know it takes a little bit of time, so, you know, once you move the band program in there, it's going to take a little bit of time. We are tweaking a little bit the acoustics in the space, as we, now we know how, what it sounds like in the space, so I'm very excited about the space. Next, I want to go into the, just to kind of, the PAC, so again, rendering. So as we go through these renderings here in the PAC, so you see the front stairs, stage left, you can see the lift in stage right, you can see the stairs that extend all the way to the wall now, and obviously it looks like there's a new stage floor and stuff, but I think that the key thing is, is that when you look at the reality in the room, again, how our rendering really captured our vision of what we wanted in that rendering really, we've really fulfilled that. We can see, looking from the back forward, just like that image was, new LED lighting at the top, new LED sidelighting, it's kind of hard to see the speakers, but the speakers are now flown in the air, the new stairs in the front, the lift stage left, and the full stairs that go from the stage to the wall, stage right. And it just, it really feels good when you walk into that space. I'm excited for that final cleaning that's going to happen this week, and then actually, you know, get to a point where we can really utilize that space in the near future. This was the audio porch, again, you know, a vision of what that audio porch would look like, and where it would be located, removing the center aisle in our space, and, and just from the stage looking out, so you can really see that, our audio porch back here, these are cases that go over the equipment to lock and secure it, and you can see our new carpet and kind of how the, just the feel of the space, new projection system on the back wall, and so we actually have a permanently installed AV system in that space. And again, I just, it's, it was really fun to be able to walk into the spaces today and look at them, take a couple of pictures, because there's been a lot going on, so it felt really good to be able to do that. And I'm excited for the, for the students to be able to use the spaces. So again, the project is complete from the timeline. The gym stage area, there's a, there's a little bit more happening in there yet. Stage is up and in, and the picture that I'm going to show shows it up all the way, it's functioning and moves up and down, just like we want it to. The sound system is in, the lighting system is going in right now, the curtains are going in right now, actually, the curtains will be installed tomorrow, the lighting will be installed tomorrow, this is the stage lighting. So it's wrapping up frantically and furiously right now. It, you know, it is convenient that there's free access right now for the construction workers. We've had some delays with shipping equipment and getting it here, and meeting timelines the way we anticipated at the end here for some of the things that were coming in late, just because of everything that's going on. So, but we still do anticipate by the end of the week that things will be ready to go, with the exception of touch-up paint, which will be, the painters coming out on Monday, so that should be able to handle. So this is, this is two weeks ago, actually, so I prefaced that picture. Stage is down, so you can see what the stage extension looks like. It's on the other side, I kind of accidentally took the picture from the wrong side, but I meant to take it from the same view, and I took it from the other side. So obviously you can see there's a lot of equipment in there, but we wanted to protect the floor, and you can see the stairs there, so the stage is there, and this is a picture of it actually today. So we don't have the pads on down here yet, actually, those are coming the end of this week, but this is what the stage looks on the bottom, and then there'll be pads along the bottom here to protect, just like there was before. And so these mechanisms on the side here, on each side, are just the mechanisms that secure it, lock it up when it's up. So this is what it looks like when it's up. So again, that tentative complete of February, March, I left it on there, and, you know, we're, we're still, we're still there, and they, if they come and paint on Monday, we will be done on Monday, so, which would have met our timeline of original timeline for the opening. So again, North Park Elementary, we can see the timeline of events there, again, at the bottom, ribbon cutting, fall of 2020, and it's, we've got to be ready. So there's obviously some concerns with timelines right now and just what's going on, and, and, you know, can I get, continue to get construction workers onsite, or can I? At this point, yes, we can, but, you know, as things spread, if, if, you know, heaven forbid, one of our contractors and all the contractors on our site are tested positive, and they're no longer coming to our site, we're not going to get any other construction workers from other sites from that company, they're going to shut us, shut this site down. So right now, they're working, they're moving forward, but it is definitely a concern, I just wanted to put it out there. So again, the rendering at the front entrance, the pictures that I'm going to show next is in exactly the same place, but if you look to the left side of the picture, it kind of give you an idea of what the front of the cafeteria on the left side will look, is looking like now. So you can see it's a little muddy here, but this is that big window at the front of the cafeteria, so our brickwork is going up, and they're moving along, the cafeteria will be bricked up soon, so that's progressing quickly. So again, it feels good to see taking shape. In all the pictures at North Park, you'll see that it's really, the additions are really taking shape. So again, the back of the building, this was the rendering, the vision of what it would look like, this is what we have today. So focusing on the structure of the building, and, you know, it definitely is, is, looks and feels just like that rendering does, that we, that we built from. And obviously, again, there's, there's a lot of moisture back there, let's say it's very wet, and as things have melted, it runs off the hill, and I guess it shows the importance of our rain gardens. I didn't think I'd ever say that, but yes, it shows the importance of our rain gardens. So inside the cafeteria, again, that vision of what we wanted to build, this is what it looks like now, so we're getting there, but you can still, you can see that the inside's starting to take shape, we've got concrete down in the floor, and, you know, the walls are starting to go up on the backside, so we're starting to have some progress there. And they're really on schedule, these are on schedule right now. So this is a learning studio, so I took a couple of pictures inside that learning studio spaces, so this is looking at, again, this one I took backwards, I did it twice, I apologize. So when you look at the picture, that window, instead of being on the right side of the picture, and the actual, it's going to be on the left side. So this is actual in the learning studio on the other side, so there's that corner window, and these are the breakout spaces here, but that's, we've got sheetrock going up now, on the, on this addition, most of the brickwork inside and out is done, so they're really moving quickly in there now, once the walls started going up, so it's really taking shape. And again, we're really, we're really on schedule with those additions. And I just have to remind everybody, this is where we were when we started, we had lots of rain and we had holes full of water. So to be, to be back on schedule with those additions, at least right now, it feels very good. Obviously, as I expressed, we have some high level of concern moving forward on what's going on, but at this point, you know, we feel good with where we're at, so I just wanted to assure everybody with that. So again, our, you know, really, it's, construction will continue during distance learning, like I said, additions, tentative completion, just, just the way it was, April, May, we should be wrapping up, and then phase two is set to begin right at the end of May, June. Now, obviously, with everything going on, you know, there's also, there's opportunities to, to speed things up as well, but we just can't predict that at this point. So right now, we're just hanging our hat on the fact that we have a construction site that's active, and we're on schedule, and we just need to keep focusing on that. And again, that project completion being ready for the next school year. So final, I know I'm going a little long here, budget, so I just wanted to reiterate, we did, is it a week ago, two weeks ago, that we had an executive meeting to review the budget, and we had Carl Sanderson, Superintendent Kelly, and Finance Director Denise Sunstrom. And the revenues that we're looking at, again, we've talked about this from the beginning, that we're combining existing funds with our bond referendum to complete these projects, you see that in both columns, from North Park, using LTFM dollars, Capital Projects Levy dollars, and the security grant, and then Columbia Heights High School, you know, we're using LTFM dollars and capital dollars. And then you can see the total project funding, and then, oops, accidentally, oh, there we go. And at the very bottom there, you can see that in both instances at this point, we're still holding the line on not being over budget. And in the high school at that $86, now we are pretty much complete there, so. The, the nice thing about the high school, which is helping a little bit, is in some areas, we really did spend a little bit less money, and, and some of the companies that had, you know, kind of a contingency budgets factored in, we get those credited back. So that's all balancing at the end as we have some of these cleanup things. So obviously, we feel, I feel very good about this, and so North Park is, you know, we're still in the heat of it, so we still need to stay on top of that and make sure that change orders are held to a minimum, and, and, and once we get into the meat of the building, we'll see what we see, once we start taking ceilings down and walls down within the building, but feel very good about it at this point. That is it.
All right, questions?
How did you manage to get just the $86 difference? I mean, that's, that's pretty much like nailing it.
I don't know, but I feel pretty good about it.
You should.
Add or under budget, that's our motto.
It's like a bullseye. He just wants his thermometer to look good next year, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, $86, I mean, don't buy them thank you notes, you might go over.
If I could, I would just like to also say that Brian and I walked through the old and newly remodeled band room. Do you want to just mention a little bit on that?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't get a picture of that in there, because it's fantastic. So the old band room, and we took the risers out, had to redo the floor, we found some fun things underneath there, we had main steam lines running up from the boiler room below, that were actually underneath the risers, and we, and we had, actually, our emergency power for our building comes up from there as well, and so it was, it was very interesting, and we found a very, a great solution, we were able to, one, we were able to move the ceiling up in there a little bit to open up the room a little bit more. Obviously, with the risers gone, it's, you know, it opens it up more, because you're, you already have more space, we have LED lights in there now, like our other rooms, and then we had a custom-built cabinet put over those pipes, that is like right off to the left of the whiteboard of the teacher station, and we moved the teacher wall in that space, so it aligns with that. So now, as you walk in the door, right to your left, there's, there's a desk, basically, and to the left of that desk is the teaching space, so it almost just works perfectly, like it's built there and made there for that teacher to use while she's teaching or he's teaching, and it just, it turned out great. So a little dicey there for a little bit, and we were trying to figure out what we're going to do with these pipes, but, you know, easy solution, to make it a useful space, useful cabinet, so.
And the old band storage that was in there is going to be converted, it has been converted into a closet, so we can do costumes and things like that, so.
Okay.
It's looking good.
All right. Other questions? All right, thanks, Brian. On to sustainable initiatives.
As Brian gets the PowerPoint up for this, this was a wonderful opportunity that just seemed to drop into our laps for a lot of different reasons, and so we're very excited about it. We've talked a little bit about it, saying it's coming, but we're really finalizing it now, and so I'm hoping that when you see this, you'll be as excited as Brian and I have been to be a part of it.
Thank you. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. So again, Columbia Heights, this evening, I'm going to talk about in this presentation, Columbia Heights Public Schools Sustainability Initiative. Again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And again, our core values, and I, it was, it was hard fought to not find one that didn't meet this initiative. It, again, it just runs through, and as we go through it, you could, I think you'll really see it, there's definitely a lot of excitement in, in what we can do moving forward in this area. This evening, this is just an informational item, no, no more governance. So I guess I wanted to start when talking about sustainability in public, Columbia Heights Public Schools, and just, that this isn't a new concept, this is, this is things that we've been doing for a long time here, you know, we've been recycling here for a long time, this is the basics, we've done composting here for quite some time now at some of our sites, and looking at expanding for next year. Solar panels, we have solar panels on three of our schools, and we're in the process of expanding those solar panels now, North Park this summer, and Columbia Heights High School this summer. We've started a massive LED lighting conversion in the district, again, getting to more high efficiency, the rebates are incredible right now, so we can do this conversion at a very low cost and get buyback in some of our areas, particularly at our high school, in two to three years. So it's quite incredible right now with the rebates that we're getting. And each of our schools has a plastic bag recycling now through, working with the city, and so, I mean, there's a lot more, obviously, I'm sure you can think of things right now that, you know, either your kids have been involved in or somebody else has presented on, but I just wanted to just touch on that, so this isn't a new conversation, these are things that we've been doing for quite some time in the school district. And again, when we talk about sustainability, I like this graphic, just because, you know, there's two paths to go in this conversation, and, and, you know, there's, you know, this costs me less, or this gives me a short-term gain, or, you know, or we look at the big picture, long-term. And I think when you talk about sustainability, renewable energies, you really have to focus on that long-term. I mean, I think of like the solar panels, that is a long-term gain, so it's an investment for the future, so we're, we're not reaping all of the benefits of our solar panels right now, but when our, when our 10-year term is up, we re-reap all of the benefits from the solar panels, so you'll have to think about that long-term, not that we're not getting any benefits from it, we are, it's just that we have to share that benefit. So we really have to talk about what the long-term looks like when we look at those initiatives. So, and I also wanted to just talk about, you know, kind of what we feel is important, we recognize the importance of conserving resources and protecting our environment, we're committed to environmental stewardship by fostering healthy and sustainable schools, you know, really positively impacting our students and preparing them for, to be environmental We recognize the potential savings from reducing the amount of waste that schools produce, so when we're producing waste, it's got to be picked up, it's got to be taken somewhere, that all comes at a cost, and, and obviously, there's resources, our energy consumed to make that move as well. We recognize that producing our own energy reduces the amount of energy we need to purchase, so, just like our solar, if we're, if we're producing our own electricity, then there's less electricity that we have to purchase. We recognize that our students and our schools today will shape the future of environmental sustainable practices. So, so what's the next steps for sustainability here? And so the pieces that we're, the piece that we're talking about today really is sustainable management system for non-organic and organic waste. We, we also have, and are talking about wastewater treatment systems and what that would look like, and, but I think for today, I really just want to focus on the non-organic waste and organic waste, it's something that we're, we've, have a lot more confidence in what we're doing moving forward in that area. So focusing on that, we have our organic and non-organic waste, and currently, you know, we're looking at the waste and we're loading it into dumpsters, and we're sending it, somebody's coming and picking it up with their truck, you know, there's gas expense there, and it's moving somewhere else, and, you know, what are they burning it, landfilling it, what are they doing with it? Hopefully, with our compost, they're actually doing what they're supposed to, and composting it, in a large compost facility, I believe in O'Keeffe County is really doing that. But really, what we're looking at is, so we have this here, what if it doesn't leave here, what if we can turn that into energy? So what if we can turn that into energy? So that's what we really were talking about here, taking our compostable waste, not shipping it off and turning it to energy. So steps that we've taken in this area, so we've engaged with a company, Waste Energy Canada, who's a leading company providing solutions in this area. Canada, who's a leading company providing solutions in this area. We had them out onsite, and they did a tour of one of our buildings, as a potential site. And then, we visited a couple sites that had these products, or this technology already implemented in them. And, and we're engaging in practical conversations on piloting, piloting this technology in Columbia Heights Public Schools with them currently. So, just to give you a little bit about Waste Energy Canada first. So, it's a technology-driven company focused on providing off-grid holistic infrastructure solutions. So, you know, I, I mentioned the two items, the organics, non-organics, and then the wastewater treatment, those fit within that. And again, we're talking about the organics and non-organics now. So, they've been around, they've deployed logical proven, you know, really modular systems, technology platforms to solve these problems. They have clients that, that go across the span, governments, industry, non, non-government organizations, military. I think a lot of these systems were really built and designed out of the need within the military, when you have bases moving around, being mobile, you know, not leaving things behind, you know, taking, recycling, reusing what they have when they get there, and so that they leave the space as it was when they got there. You know, so they're really focusing on, on community independence, security, a home family, and particularly, the next generation. So, we're really talking about long-term, we're talking about the next generation. This company is, is 200 million in project infrastructure and management services, services, and, and this is across four continents. So, they're really a global company, and a global leader in this area. These are just a few of the, the companies that they currently are working with, and their varying products. Obviously, you can see a few, I think, that you would recognize from the states, that they're working with. And it may not be that they're working with Starbucks in the United States, but they are working with them globally. So, facility tours. So, in the fall of 2019, so just this past fall, I, like I said, we had Waste Energy Canada onsite, and with what we were discussing, and, and what we're seeing within our district, the site that we visited was North Park Elementary. And I'll kind of get into a little bit of that more, more in a little bit, but, and then, so we had them out, and had conversations with them, and felt good about those conversations. They felt good about the opportunities within our sites, and, and what we wanted to achieve. So, the next step was going out and seeing this, seeing this equipment actually work, where it's been implemented. So, we visited a couple sites, looking at both the water treat, wastewater treatment, and the organics and non-organics recycling. And we just did this, this past winter. So, what did we see? And what we feel like we saw was the future of sustainability, a fully automated system, it's a waterless digester, there's no water discharged, so there's no, no, no drain, no sewer lines required, there's no VOCs or CO2 emissions, pH neutral. So, there's really no, I mean, when we saw this in person, we, you know, you anticipate a smell, you're talking about organics, organics that are breaking down, you anticipate a smell, I think. It did not exist at all. You're, you're really reducing the volume quite a bit, a minimum of 70%. So, if you're putting, you know, you're putting a lot of material in there, and you're reducing that by 70% by this process. And you, it has a remote monitoring capability, so there's, there's a standalone hopper that put this in, shred, and then you can feed this into a system, and I'll kind of go through that in a minute. And you can really monitor what's going on, you can really monitor what energy it's using, what, what's going into it, the poundage going into it, what's coming out of it. And, and that can all be done remotely, so there's, there's a lot of technology built into this. So, how does it work? So, it's really, I mean, it seems really simple when I show you these graphs, and we'll kind of talk through it, but, I mean, really, it is this simple. And it was shocking to see it, and actually, you know, live and see it in action. So, we're just emptying our food into the, that compostable material into the bio digester, so into the hopper, and it can go through a grinder, you don't necessarily have to go through there, but if you grind up the larger trunks, it just, it speeds up the process, and the product in the end clean, is cleaner. You let the system process for about a day, and then, coming out the other end is the food waste and compostable material. It's really, it's a high, high biofuel, in just in 24 hours. So, it's really a fuel that can be used to create energy. So, the fuel is used to run and integrate a biomass boiler, and, of course, the result is heat delivered to the existing heating system. So, taking our waste, turning it to energy. This is what it looks like. So, this is the unit live. So, again, I'll look at the picture from right to left, like I said, it's very modular, very far right, our brains, our controls, how we connect to the system, how we monitor it. The next section is, you can see the hopper at the top, and the grinders within that, so you just, the bags with the compostable bags, you have your compostable material in those bags, stick them in the hopper, grind it up, goes into the, the main unit to the next stage, where the two bins that lift up are. And, and then, and then it processes through there in a 24-hour period, approximately, and then, out the other end is, is your product. And on ours, here, they're just putting it into a barrel, on ours, it would be an auger, that would auger right into the, the biomass boiler, and thus, burn and produce energy. So, this is what it looks like inside the hopper, they opened it up for us. It, it might be a little bit hard to see, but you can see, like banana peel, a little bit here, fork, a biodegradable fork. And again, they, they didn't, they just threw the bag in there, because they really wanted us to show us, you know, that if you just throw it right in there, you can get, you know, if you run this, so they, what they do on the other end is, is, instead of running their shredder, they run it through, and then any chunks that come out at the end, they just plop it back in there, and let it run again, so it cleans it up, instead of shredding it. But, it's fascinating, I mean, the fact that, you know, this product was produced in less than 24 hours. It went from just bags of organics. And it really does feel like, I just wanted to, it really does feel like coffee grounds. You, you can scoop it up with your hand, smell it, doesn't really smell like anything. It's, it's not wet, it's dried out, and they had a pail of, of product, or stuff that came out, that they, there's like the first, one of the first batches that they created at this site, and they had the unit for approximately, well, just over six months, and now, it's been eight, nine months or so. But, it looked exactly the same as the day it came out, really. I mean, so it comes out, this is what it is. So, it didn't, and that was just kind of a show that, you know, this really is what you get when it comes out at the end. Now, of course, we would have burned it long ago, and, and used it to create energy. But, obviously, in this conversation, and I said earlier that we visited North Park, North Park for our school district, has really been the leader in sustainability, and, obviously, we have a, a construction project, as you heard recently, going on there. So, you know, you couple all that together, and it just, it's a perfect fit. You know, they were the green ribbon in 2018, Stan Maras could say better than anybody about all the things that they're doing about sustainability. And it's just amazing, I could have probably had 20, 30 slides, just on the things that they have around sustainability. So, it really fits, they're already doing the separation for compostables, so, out there. And, so, that's what we're looking at. Just to kind of give you an idea, again, when we visited the site, it couldn't have been any better. So, and they, they have, we have our biodigester, and this is the back, this blue area, dark blue area, is just the back entrance, the back dock of that area. Along the wall, the biodigester would go, this is the boiler room right next to it. So, it literally would be the auger that goes into the biomass boiler, which just feeds and ties right into the school boilers. So, it's really, you know, basically, it's, it's heating, heating, it's creating heat, which just offsets the heat that those boilers needed, offsets the energy that they needed to use, to get the water to where it needed to be. So, it's definitely just what, what we promised, which was taking our waste and turning it to energy. So, next steps for us, I said this earlier, we're really collaborating with the vendor, and talking to them, there's a lot of interest in Columbia Heights Public Schools, having a significant or substantial price reduction, because we are looking at being an educational demonstration site pilot. So, you know, it's, it goes, it's more than just educational for our students, but it's educational for others around us. So, you know, really opening it up, and, and having it, just really a learning site. So, and dollars that we would use for this project would come from existing district capital dollars. So, with that said.
If I could just add one more thing on this.
And when you're looking at the digester, we're working with the company to see if we can make things more visible, so that students could actually see, it was fascinating to see, look down the hopper, and then, to see the grinder, and they lifted that up, and then, to actually feel the product. And I was going to bring some back in my suitcase for you, in a baggie, but then everybody advised me not to, because they thought that perhaps the security at the airport wouldn't find that as much fun for you all.
But it's the stuff in the bag.
Yeah, but it, it really is, it was light and fluffy, and it was just so great, but we thought, what a wonderful educational thing for the kids, and they're going to try to see if they, how they can make windows and things in it, so they can actually see what's going on, which is really exciting.
Cool. Well, this is more science than I've had in about a few decades. It's fascinating, I'm just, impressive.
Just wait till we get to wastewater treatment in a few weeks.
Laura, go ahead.
When you first brought this up, the first thing that came to mind was, my gosh, we're going to have Mr. Fusion.
Oh, from Back to the Future.
Because especially when the, the banana peel went in, you know. This is really, really cool, and being able to create that, like, like the coal mine over at the Chicago Museum of Art, where you actually, would actually see how all of this works. I mean, that really ties in very well with the concept and the reputation over there at North Park. This is amazing. This is, this is a wonderful, a wonderful opportunity for collaboration, and being able to share this out, I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
And the electronic buddies up there, any thoughts?
I do have a question. If, is, would the fuel that this would create be in addition to what our boilers are, are already using, or would it be in place of?
Good question. It's just, it's, it's supplementing it, so it can't replace. It, there's, it's just not big enough, it doesn't have enough horsepower, or fuel, to feed what the building needs, so it just offsets it. So, think of it like our solar panels, we use more electricity than what our solar panels produce, but the solar panels offset our use, so we have to buy less.
No, I, I actually like that part of the, I like the redundancy in that for this system, I think that's important.
Anything else?
I mean, I'm, I'm pro, I like all of these efforts, as you know, it's a pet, pet project of mine, too. Maybe it's the process of being a North Park parent, I don't know. All right, any?
Madam Chair, if I could just say one other thing, if this works, or when it works over there, what we would like to do is supplement the pool heating, and things like that over here. So, we'll do that, and from our learnings there, then, the pool takes a lot of heat, and we're just thinking that would be a perfect site, to put in another one, as we continue working with, with the company and the pilot. But we want to make through, get through the pilot first, and then, but, we have our eyes on the pool next.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
You just have to get the high schoolers good at composting, I feel like that's the next step done, huh?
I think they'll enjoy the pool being warm.
I've heard from some swimmers, I happen to know, that our pool is, go ahead, Hala.
But you can tell them either that or cold water if they swim in.
I heard our pool is warmer than some of the neighboring pools, though, that's the word on the street, so.
We try to keep people happy.
All right, thank you, Brian. We'll move on to action items. First is the revised budget for 2019, 2020. Denise, if you're around.
Good evening, Superintendent Kelly, Chair Severson, and Members of the Board, here and on camera. I'm going to present the revised budget, and we went over this at the last work session last Tuesday. So, our mission, all belong, all succeed. Our core values, the budget tonight, we're highlighting excellence and integrity. So, briefly, the changes to the general fund, from the preliminary budget, which we adopted in, well, you adopted in May of last year, 2019, the revenue increased just a little bit, over $125,000, which isn't very much on a $49 million general fund budget. And this was due to the, and the enrollment went down from what our preliminary budget was, but the general ed funding did go up 2%. We also updated all the expenses in the general fund, and this was for the actual staffing, because we knew the people then, and also the contract settlements. And we had more projects for long-term facility maintenance, and that was the Valley View windows, and the North Park roof. And operating capital projects at the high school were also included now in this revised budget, so that's an increase from the prelim. The food service and community ed changes, and all the other funds, food service is the only one of those funds that really changed, increased on both sides. The revenue was increased, because we were serving more breakfast and lunch, and then second breakfast with our new food service program in-house. And so, that participation went up, so when that, the revenue goes up, obviously, we have to buy more food to serve, so the expenditures went up to match that. The other funds, Fund Four Community Ed, and all the funds on the way down are very similar, are exactly the same as they were in the prelim budget. So, looking at the revised budget, this is just the general fund, and it, it's the whole page, because it has all of the assignments and reserves. So, the top line is the unassigned, and that's what we look at when we look at whether we're not, we're in the fund balance percentage, you know, our range is 6% to 12% that we want to be in. And so, that top line showing an ending balance at June of 2020 is three, just a little over $3 million, and that puts our unassigned fund balance at 9.36%. So, we are still within our fund balance, our board policy fund balance range. It looks, and when you look down at the total restricted and the non-spendable, the change in fund balance is almost 2.75, 775,000. That is due to us doing the projects that I had talked about for LTFM, and you got to, Brian did all the projects up there, so you saw all the projects that we're doing, we have the windows that we're doing this year, and the North Park roof, and that's showing up on the long-term facility maintenance line. So, you see those projects are on there, and that, we're projecting to spend that down, and to be balanced. And then, the operating capital facility, where that project is included in our bond projects, so that's why that's looking like a spend on. So, those are planned, I mean, it looks like a lot of money, but it's planned, so. Any questions on any of that? I'm going to go to the next fund, the, the next page is the one that barely has any changes, so the food service fund, both sides are up, and the prelim budget, there was only going to be a change in fund balance of $4,000, and now, we're going to make $46,500. And the other funds, community ed, a real slight improvement, is pretty much the same as it was from the preliminary. And building construction fund, which is really the capital projects fund that you saw a presentation with Brian, that, those funds all remain the same. So, the projected balance at the end of June, June 2020, for all of the funds is $10,601,185. And that's all I have, unless you.
All right, can we get a motion to carry that forward?
So, move.
John?
Second.
Molly, second. All right, discussion, any questions?
And just a comment, too, for people who may be watching, that this was also presented at our work session, too, so I appreciate Denise and the work she did, you're hearing it for us at that point.
We get a little more volume on Lauren. Lauren, could you just talk a little bit louder and repeat that, we all had a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
Oh, sure, I just wanted to say that, for the people that might be watching, that this was presented at our work.
at our work session as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not seeing this revision for the first time and I wanted to thank Denise for putting it together for that presentation and then again tonight as well.
Yep. We've all, we've, we, we worked, worked on this last week at our work session. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thanks Denise.
Thanks Denise.
Lindsey Bennett. I would say, oh, she's hiding back there. Hi Lindsey. Adoption, to adopt resolution proposing placement on unrequested leave of absence.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Back in January, you approved the resolution where we're supposed to start the staffing process and look for efficiencies. And as part of that process, unrequested leave of absence for tenured teachers, we had to propose placement, give them a chance if they would like to have a hearing, and then do a final placement. So, as part of our staffing process, this is the annual time we'd bring it forward. At this time, we do not really have a very big unrequested leave of absence. The person will still stay whole. It's just a fraction of their FTE that's over 1.0. So, tonight I'm here seeking approval of the resolution.
All right. Again, we've been talking about making efficiencies and this is all part of the kind of annual process of that. I'm going to go ahead and read this motion, or this, sorry, this resolution and then we'll get a motion to move it forward. How's that sound? All right. Resolution proposing to place tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. One, that it is proposed, I don't read this name. Just skip the names, right? That a teacher of said school district be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay effective at the end of the 2920 school year on June 30th, 2020 pursuant to MS Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subsection 7 and Article 5, section 8 of the current master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative. Number two, that said, proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence is not the result of the implementation of an education district agreement. Three, that written notice be sent to paid teacher regarding the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay as provided by law and said notice shall include a date for hearing if requested and be, and be in substantially the following form. Should I read the letter? No, okay. That we will notify them as written here. Four, that each and all of the foregoing grounds of said notice are given, are, are within the grounds for unrequested leave placement as set forth by Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subsection 7 and Article 5, section 8 of the master, of the current master agreement between the school district and the exclusive representative and hereby adopted as fully as though separately set forth and resolved here. So, we're asking for that motion. Unrequested leave motion. Can I get a, a motion to carry that forward? Hala?
Yeah, that's good.
Second, Laura?
Yes, second.
All right. Any discussion?
I have a question. Can you hear me okay? Just real quick. So, this is a, essentially, there's a current staff member or a teacher who is working more than one FTE. So, it's just reducing that down to one FTE, correct?
That's correct.
And then, I'm assuming that because of that, there are no programs or any services to students that will be impacted?
We're moving some positions around, but we'll still have the extra part filled in a different capacity.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? All right. This is a resolution, so Molly will need a roll call on this one. Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Hesamari?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Hanging around, health insurance renewal. Thank you Denise.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Requests for proposals need to be issued by school districts that are fully insured at least once in a 24-month period. The school district at least to request proposal in December for health insurance offerings available as of July 1st, 2020. As part of this process, the district must receive at least three proposals from the market in response to the request and at least one of them must be from the public employee insurance program or PEAP. The district had received seven responses for the requests for proposals. The district's current carrier is Self-Central Service Cooperative and the medical is through Blue Cross Blue Shield and we've been with the co-op for over 20 years. The health insurance committee reviewed the proposal and the recommendation is to stay with Self-Central Service Cooperative. So, tonight I'm seeking board approval to stay with our current carrier effective July 1st, 2020.
All right. Can I get a motion to carry that forward? Some move? Molly?
Second.
John? Thanks. Any discussion on health insurance?
I have a question. Does the, is the rate for this insurance by this carrier fit within our budget expectations?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
All right. John and Hala, are you able to hear Lori and well?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, just want to be sure. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right. Connect Anoka County Broadband Withdrawal Resolution. Brian Hannikens. Thanks Lindsey.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. So, at the previous School Board work session, I presented some information on the Anoka County, or Connect Anoka County Broadband Withdrawal. And so, over 10 years ago now, Connect Anoka County initiative started and so they had a broadband or fiber ring throughout the county. And at that time, that gave us a significant boost in our, our bandwidth, our internet connection to the outside world. Since then, through our E-rate process and going out for bid on, on internet connections, we now have, for this school year, double the bandwidth that's possible on the Connect Anoka County project and, and it's fully redundant, a single connection to two different sites and actually for a less price than what we were paying before. So, since this was a board-approved item in the past, we are seeking approval to end that agreement moving forward so we're no longer paying for a service that we're not using.
All right. Get a motion to carry this one forward. Loriann, second?
Second.
Molly? All right. Discussion. All right. This is again, oh, go ahead, John.
Quick question. It's just, it's, it's a motion and then we can just vote on it? It's just, it's not a resolution to withdraw or is it?
No.
It's just a motion, yeah. Just a motion here. I don't think we, it's not like ties or something where we need a resolution. I, I think it's only coming to us because it was a previous board topic.
Correct.
Typically, we don't handle internet contracts.
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It does say on here, Connect Anoka County Broadband Withdrawal Resolution.
That's why I was asking, but if you're saying that.
Where are you seeing that, Laura?
D.
The board will be asked to approve a resolution there. Sorry, yeah, under D, Don. I'm just saying that now.
It should be in the packet.
Yeah. Oh, the resolution is here then.
It is in the packet.
Oh, it is a resolution. Great, sorry. Well, I'm glad we did that.
Good question, John.
Thanks, John. All right.
My brain's working now that I'm back from vacation.
I need a vacation. Probably not the time, right? All right, so here we go again. Resolution, amendment number two to connectivity services agreement with community anchor institutions for broadband services at colocation service site. This amendment is made, oh, as of the 24th, this, of the month of March 2020, the date of the signature of the parties notwithstanding by and between the County of Anoka and political subdivision of the state of Minnesota, 2103rd Avenue, Anoka, Minnesota, do I have to read all this? 55303, hereinafter referred to as the county and Columbia Heights Public Schools, 1440, 49th Ave., Northeast Columbia Heights, Minnesota, 55421, hereinafter referred to as the entity. Whereas, the county wishes to amend its agreement with the entity for connectivity services and the Connect Anoka County Network, which was effective upon the completion of build and go-live of the Zayo system in 2013 and whereas the agreement was previously amended on August 16th, 2015 to provide continued service until August 16th, 2020 and whereas the entity has sent a letter of intent indicating that it wishes to discontinue connectivity services on the Connect Anoka County Network in addition of the county's plan to replace and update equipment during the 2020 calendar year and whereas paragraph seven modifications of said, or sorry, 12 modifications of said agreement provides that any mutual alterations, modification, or variations of the terms of this agreement shall be valid and enforceable only when they have been reduced to writing as an amendment and signed by the parties. Now, therefore, in consideration of the mutual covenants hereinafter stated or contained in the agreement, the parties do hereby agree as follows. One, the parties agree to change paragraph six term as follows. This, A, this will be for a period commencing on the date of signing by both parties and continuing until August 16th, 2015, initial term with up to a total of three renewal periods in additional five-year terms, renewal terms. Upon written amendment, both parties shall provide written notice of intent to renew this agreement not less than 180 days before the end of the initial term or renewal term. For purposes of this agreement, written notices shall be sent to the address of each of the parties as indicated above. Upon the termination or expiration of this agreement, Anoka County shall have no further obligation to provide services and no further liability to entity. Upon termination or expiration of this agreement, Zayo shall be provided a reasonable opportunity to retrieve its equipment from the colocation service site. At the request of the entity, Zayo will remove equipment from individual terminated colocation sites within a mutually agreed upon time not to exceed 180 days upon termination of the entity's connectivity service from a colocation site without terminating this entire agreement. Zayo, at the request of the entity, shall remove its equipment from said colocation site within a mutually agreed upon time not to exceed 180 days and any underlying rights for that colocation site shall terminate with the removal without further action or notice by any party. Any underlying rights granted by the entity under this agreement shall terminate or expire with the agreement without need for further action or notice by any party. B, pursuant to paragraph A, both parties have sent written notice to each other more than 180 days in advance of August 16th, 2020, indicating the desire to terminate the, the agreement in its entirety. The entity hereby affirms that, one, its desire to discontinue all participation in the Connect Anoka County Network and, two, it desires to have the service and equipment sites listed in attachment A spliced out of the network and, three, it understands that adding a site back in will require a new entity agreement which will not be under the cost and compensation schedule of this agreement. C, the agreement will terminate when the entity sites are spliced out of the network and this will occur as soon as practical, but in no event later than August 16th, 2020. This amendment is hereby made a part of and shall be amended to the agreement of the parties. And three, all other terms and conditions of the original agreement shall remain in full force and effect up until the equipment is removed and the entity is spliced out of the network. That is the resolution. I guess, I should probably ask for a motion to carry this resolution forward since I just read it. So, can I get a motion to carry that resolution forward? Molly, thank you. I already have it. I didn't need to read it first.
Oh, you already have a motion.
Okay, great. Okay, awesome. Normally, I read it first, right? And then I get the motion or do I?
Usually the other way.
Oh, thanks. I've been at a couple of board meetings before. Thanks Laura.
I was going to say, for future reference, we probably could actually call to waive the.
Waive the reading? I think we did that on a 30-page resolution once.
Yeah, the original, the original agreement was much longer than this, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, that would be a 30-page one.
It was like 45 pages.
So, this amendment, two pages, is much easier.
Yeah. Integrity and entity look a lot alike when you're reading them, just for record's sake. I think I did a decent job.
You did a good job.
You did a decent job.
Thanks.
Especially when it seemed like there were some repeating sentences, but it was actually in there.
All right. Any more questions? All right, this is another roll call vote. Molly, busy night for you. Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Hesamari?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Thanks for pointing that out, John. Appreciate it. All the, the roof bids from North Park are not a resolution. They are however, a motion. So, this I do know. All right, thanks.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. So, this evening, we're seeking an action and approval for bids for North Park Elementary Roof. Again, reminder, they were opened March 6th. This was at the previous meeting. Bid tabulations and a letter of recommendation from Garland Company was presented as an information item at the March 10th regular school board meeting. And it's our recommendation to move forward with our low bid for North Park Elementary Roof Section C, D, E, F, and G. So, really, the remainder of the roof at that facility to Peterson Brothers Roofing for $545,325. This is a company that we have worked with before and Garland also agrees and recommends moving forward with them. This is funded through long-term facilities maintenance dollars.
All right. Oh, can I get a motion to move this one forward? John's going to second that one. All right. Any, now I'll ask for discussion. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right, communications, audit, and plan. Thank you, Brian.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Director Stunkel and I are here this evening to present, to seek action for the presented communications plan. At the previous school board meeting, we presented to you the various components and the process. So, just to reiterate, the district worked with an outside firm to come in and conduct an audit. That included 11 different focus groups, online surveys, lots of input from many different types of stakeholders and stakeholder groups. Then, they compiled all of that information for us and provided us with recommendations. So, Director Stunkel is going to present the eight recommendations and our plan.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about the, the ways that we are going to enact this communications audit and plan. So, there are eight recommendations. We went over at the work session, the details of that, but in the interest of time, we'll just hit the highlights. And the recommendation number one is to ensure planned, proactive, and consistent communications as a strategic priority. So, we've got the goal of making sure that this communications plan will be guiding our, our work in communications, that we will create a communications advisory council that will elicit input on district information and communications effectiveness and that we will continue to evaluate all communication strategies, tactics, and activities. Recommendation two is to build stakeholder trust in district and school leadership through enhanced transparency and responsiveness. We'll be doing that by explaining in formal announcements the why behind some of the decisions that we make. We'll also be creating a culture of customer service across school campuses and departments for both our internal and external customers. Recommendation three is to take control of the narrative about Columbia Heights Public Schools and its schools. We know that we've got a lot of great things happening in our district and we really want to make sure that we are communicating that out using key messages and also using our network of communicators. We also want to make sure that our internal communications and employee engagement is a strategic priority and that's our recommendation four. We'll be making sure that the way that we're communicating within the organization is effective. Recommendation five is to strengthen and standardize parent communication. It's important to have effective and efficient ways to communicate with our parents. We'll be establishing guidelines to do this. We'll also be making sure that parents have increased. We'll also be making sure that parents have increasing awareness of the tools that we have, as well as ensuring that we're translating documents appropriately. Recommendation six is to enhance and expand digital communications. I think that we've all come to a greater appreciation of the role of digital communications recently. We want to make sure that our website is an easy resource for people, and I do hope, I appreciate the superintendent mentioning about the COVID-19 resources that we have, and I do encourage everybody to go to that because there are a lot of wonderful resources that are available to our community through that website. We also want to make sure that our social media is organized and is communicating in an effective way. Recommendation seven is to complete a crisis communication plan. We have great appreciation for having effective communications plans and that we all know what our role is should a crisis occur. Recommendation eight is to develop a comprehensive marketing plan to protect and attract Columbia Heights Public School enrollment and to solidify the brand. We are always interested in having our community members enroll in our district, and we want to make sure that we are reaching out to our community so that they know the Heights pride that we have and the ways that Columbia Heights Public Schools really offers an exceptional learning experience for our students. So that's the sweet and condensed version of our communications audit we went and plan, which we went over in more detail during the board work session.
Thank you.
And that information and performance indicators will be presented on an annual basis to the school board. So we have different checkpoints along the way, and we can inform the board of the progress that we're making with each of those recommendations and goals. So with that, we're seeking board approval of the plan.
All right. If we get a motion to carry that one forward.
So moved.
Laura? Oh, Holla? Liv, Holla.
Holla.
Second?
Second.
Laura, I guess, sorry. That was confusing. Laura on the motion, Holla on the motion, Laura on the second. All right, discussion. I personally want to say thanks for all the hard work on this. I know we went to great lengths to really do this, and communication is a really high value to me personally, and I think it does really go a long way with other people, and it's exciting to see the benchmarks you guys set up. And I know it's a very ambitious plan, but I did ask that question, but you said it's a manageable plan, so I'm gonna trust your expertise in this. But I'm thankful for, each of the points really gets at a lot of the things we've been hearing as board members, and I'm sure you guys have been hearing as you've been out and about, and it's very exciting to think of making improvements on what I think we're already continuing to improve on. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Lauren, do you want to take the lead on the school board subcommittee on community engagement?
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't think I'll say a whole lot after, you know, we discussed this at our work session and we've discussed it at the previous meeting, but, you know, we do have a resolution. School Board Policy 213 permits the board to designate school board committees and subcommittees. And by way of that, we're looking to make our ad hoc subcommittee on community engagement into a standing committee. And I think that it was a good segue to hear about the communications audit just now, talking about really engagement and communication with all of our parties. And so, you know, kind of putting forth the school board's commitment to communication and community engagement through this committee.
All right, can we get a motion to carry that one forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
John?
All right, I'm gonna read the resolution, which if you're reading along is on page 30 in your packet. Resolution regarding Subcommittee Establishment. Whereas it is the policy of the school board to designate school board subcommittees when it is determined that a committee process facilitates the mission of the school board, and whereas the school board subcommittee will be formed by the school board resolution which shall outline the duties and purposes of the subcommittee, and whereas the school board reserves the right to limit, create, or abolish subcommittees as it deems appropriate, and whereas the school board chair shall appoint the members of the subcommittee and designate the chair, and whereas the ad hoc subcommittee defined community engagement as an ongoing process of two-way communication between the school board and the communities it serves. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows, the Board of Education of Columbia Heights Public Schools does hereby resolve to form a School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement to further its commitment to community engagement and make recommendations to the full school board on the following. One, community engagement strategies to implement and timelines of implementation. Two, evaluation and assessment of community engagement efforts. Three, revenue and expenditures necessary to support community engagement efforts. Be it further resolved that the Subcommittee on Community Engagement will meet at a minimum of four times annually, once each quarter, and report to the full school board at the regular school board meeting following the subcommittee meeting.
All right. Any more discussion on this? All right. Molly, it looks like you're just in the midst of.
I'm good.
All right, okay. All right, so this is also a roll call vote.
Clarkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Asamari.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. And at some point, we will have a discussion, I guess, about filling the subcommittee, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that can be on another meeting agenda then. Okay, great. School board member, city liaison role definition, again, this is something we have been working on for the past couple of meetings. It was mentioned at a school board meeting, I think our last meeting, and then we did talk more extensively at our last work study. I will not read the entirety of the role as it's been up and about and around for a couple of weeks, but can I get a motion to carry forward? So the motion would be then to approve the school board member city liaison role definition. Can I get a motion to carry that forward?
So moved.
John, I think?
Yeah, what, John?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Lauren, thank you. All right, any more discussion on the school board member city liaison role definition? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We have a definition. And then last but not least, certainly in the midst of all that's going on, we're gonna talk about school board meetings during federal and state emergency. So we're gonna be asked to approve a motion regarding school board meetings during federal and state emergencies. I'm gonna roll to this, and I'm gonna read what's written here. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, all the meetings of the Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D .021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. In lieu of making a special posting for teleconference for each regular meeting during the health pandemic, a school board can take action to convert all future meetings to a teleconference format. Taking action does not inhibit school board members from personally attending a school board meeting. It provides notice that some or all of the board's members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations. Minnesota Statute 13D .021 does not require that a physical location for each board member be posted. So this is a motion to help us continue to conduct business and keep things moving here as the school board without putting people's health at further risk as things pick up. So can I get a motion to move this one forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Okay.
Holla with the second? All right, discussion.
Is this, we're doing this just for this particular pandemic, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I think because in the motion, it's specific to COVID-19 corona. It would limit to the duration that we're told probably by government officials that we should be existing within these parameters.
Okay, thank you.
Our desire is not to just totally become a teleboard.
No, I understand. I didn't know we were doing this for just a sweeping federal and state emergencies moving forward, or just specifically for this one. It's fine, just clarifying.
No, I think it's a good clarification, though, because people in the public might wonder themselves, so it's actually a really good question. And this also, you know, all the other open meeting laws, we're still maintaining those about our conversations, limiting our conversations and different things, so, yep.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, Holla.
When would this take effect?
As soon as we pass the motion, so we could do our next meeting. I did read in the announcements that they would be here, but this would move them to the teleconference way, and I think it says, what's the statutes say? Kathy, go ahead.
This would provide us flexibility in point of fact if it's necessary for us to do it all by teleconference, that we could do it. But if it looks like it's feasible and safe, as it said in the background materials, there could be board members present here. So it gives us the greatest flexibility. In essence, you could hold it the way we're holding it tonight with some people remote, depending upon their health or situation, or we could just all go remote. And so, we didn't have an all-go remote clause, and so that's why we're passing this for the pandemic situation only, COVID-19.
So at this point, the decision is not being made to go all remote, it's just we can if we need to.
It gives us the flexibility, yes.
So if there would become a shelter-in-place or stay-home order, we could conduct a meeting, or if we thought health was at risk for some other people involved? Molly, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I just have a question as clerk for signatures, how that would work?
Good question. Would we have to stroll in?
We would, we'd have to figure that out depending upon what the condition of the board was at the time, because remember, it could be, also, it could be board members that might be stricken with the virus. So we have so far been having a little table out in the lobby for conditions where people have to stroll in and sign and do that, so we would work that out.
Okay. Good question. Yeah, there's a lot of signatures needed. Other questions? All right, this is a motion, not a resolution, correct? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, that brings us on to board topics. Does anyone have any board topics they would like to address?
Yeah, I'd like to just take a second to acknowledge all the work that the district administrators and school administrators and all the staff have been doing in switching up for distance learning. It doesn't look that huge to the outside world, but as an educator in another district having worked on this in the last week, it's humongous. It's completely dismantling education as we know it and putting it together in a different way. So I just want to commend everyone in the district for all the hard work.
I would concur.
Yeah, I also want to add on to that, too. I agree as well, and I think that, you know, the communication that I've been receiving as a parent from my children's school has been phenomenal. So I really feel like we're kept in the loop and we know what's going on, so I appreciate that. And I think just similar to what everyone else is saying, I think the confidence of our kids in being able to do this distance learning really speaks volumes to our educators here, too.
I'm incredibly impressed with the amount of work that's gone into this, and I actually receive, I think, far more communication about what's going on than I've ever received. Constant updates are very much appreciated, and so I think we can say that we're really working well on that communication plan as well, the communication strategies. This is really uncharted territory, and I wish we, you know, weren't having to go through all of this, but I also think that it'll be inspirational in the future about, remember when we managed to pull this all together and redefine our roles and be able to accomplish great things, so.
Yeah, again, I know we've all said it, but I want to reiterate to everybody here and all the other directors, teachers, staff who maybe hear this, my thanks as a school board member and as a parent. We've seen so much work done here. I mean, you're right, Holla, it's just a remantle of the entire thing, and I'm married to a teacher, so I've seen directly what, not a teacher in this district, another district, but I've seen directly what he's having to do to redo a curriculum that is high, it's meant to be in his lab, his lab in his classroom, so it's a lot of work to upend some of these things and have to be creative for teachers. And hopefully, this does, the long-term game for public education in general is huge. I mean, it'll be, hopefully, we come out on the other side of this and we can see all the gains that came out of this. Also, just special thanks to the staff members who are doing childcare for medical and first responders, what an amazing thing that is. I know it's probably not what you thought you'd be doing when you signed up this for the beginning of the year, but thank you. And then for our staff who are dropping off meals for kids. You know, I don't know our stat, but I have seen other, some other districts are doing it, and kids are getting food, and I think that was one of the big concerns I had as just a community member and a board member. I know a lot of kids depend on schools for food, just basic nutrition, and so it's been really cool to see how quickly you can whip together a whole nother food service concept in a day. It was a weekend, wasn't it? In a weekend, it was whipped out there. So good job to all parties involved.
Patty, can I just make one other comment?
Yeah, go.
Really reaching out to our community who may be watching this meeting, and if our students or your student is struggling, or it's not working, or there's, you know, you're concerned or frustrated, I would say, Superintendent Kelly, you can comment on this, but really reach out to the staff at your child's school for guidance or assistance. And, you know, I think everybody is, we all know this is a challenge. It's not gonna be easy for everybody, maybe specifically for parents, but I think that there's some help and support with our teachers, our staff, administration, who can help our students who might need it the most.
I'd like to build on that if I could. Thank you, Lauren. This is brand new for everyone, and asking parents and community members, as Lauren stated, be patient, be part of the solution when there are frustrations, as Lauren mentioned. Reach out, let the staff know. In essence, on Monday, if allowed, 3,200 kids are going online all at the same time, and we're a small district, and others are going through that, too, but just to put it in perspective, be patient, be part of the solutions, and help us out, we'd really appreciate it. And that's to the parents, and I'm speaking to myself as well, but we'll make the best of it, I know that. I just help make a difference as we move forward with this, because it will be interesting to see how it all rolls out.
I did email, as a parent, Diane Robleski, the high school principal, just about some questions. He was back to me within an hour, and that's after I sent it to the wrong email address. Somehow, another administrator forwarded it to him, and I still got a response, and they've thought through some of the things that I was like, whoa, how's this gonna work? And they're trying to think through a lot of different contingencies based on kids' connectivity access to internet at different times. So really glad to see that they're thinking through some of those things. Superintendent Kelly and I were talking about today, as we were preparing for the meeting, about how the kids are living out social studies right now. All the disciplines of social studies are all happening, and for me, who was a geography major and a psychology major, it's all, you know, this is an economics lesson, this is a history lesson, all, they're watching it happen before their eyes, so, very interesting. My kids made the joke that in 15 years, this will be on AP exams. So, not funny, but kind of funny. So, all right, any other other? Any other other?
I actually did receive a communication from Principal Burkus, and that there is going to be a test run on Thursday and Friday to make sure that the system's up, so that when we go online on Monday, that a lot of these bugs are worked out. So in case somebody didn't get the message, it is a blue day on Thursday, and you're still supposed to log into Schoology. So I'm just gonna put that out, and then on Friday, login again at 8:30, 8:30 to noon, and that will be a gold day. So just testing out the system. So again, parents, you know, help us get all through this. We'll get these kids educated, and thank you, everybody, for pulling. We'll get these kids educated, and thank everybody for pulling, this community is amazing, pulling together and helping each other out and looking out for each other.
All right. All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:51 PM.